Okay. I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting. This is our first Zoom meeting for December 15th. We will also, this meeting will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the successor agency to the ACIA, the Housing Authority, and the Avalon Hospital Board of Trustees. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? And begin. I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
-of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we please could have a moment of silence. This last week or so, we tragically lost two more young people from Avalon, Saul Delarosa and Kenny Pegaro. And I also would like us to pray for all of those travelers that are currently out of the country. And I'm hoping that they come home safely and quarantine through the holidays. As we know, we had a huge spike over the Thanksgiving holidays. Our numbers have gone up in two weeks from 43 to 95. That's absolutely terrible. We have a couple of people in the hospital. We need to pray for them. But pray for all of those that are sick, that they may have a speedy recovery, and also pray that people have good sense to mask, sanitize, and distance. That's all we have been asking, and to avoid large groups. And that's what's causing this outbreak. So I pray that you all get it together and do what you're supposed to do to keep Avalon safe. Thank you. And if we could please have the roll call. And Michael Palmer will be taking the votes and doing Denise's job today because she's out of the office. She's at home. Okay. But she's on the call. Thanks.
I'm going to start with Councilmember Ponce.
Michael.
Mike, we can just barely hear you.
Councilmember LaBelle.
President, here.
Mayor Pro- I'm sorry. Councilmember Delarosa.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall.
Here. And also on the call is our city attorney, Scott Campbell. Great.
May I also ask who Kyle Westra is?
Kyle is a consultant with RSG. He helps the city with our Housing Authority and our Successor Agency activities. Just in case there are any questions on consent items, I believe six, seven, and eight, I asked him to be on the call in case there are questions.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Nice to meet everybody.
Hi, Kyle.
And for the record, Councilmember Ponce is also in attendance.
Yes, we know that. Okay. Announcements or written communications?
We have, sorry.
That's okay.
One written communication. This is from Jim Luchahan with Love Catalina. Love Catalina, the Catalina Island Tourism Authority, would like to thank all of the businesses and shoppers who participated in the week-long 2020 Shop Catalina activities. Especially appreciated was the willingness to engage in safe practices to inhibit the spread and infection among all involved. The City of Avalon, Avalon Fire Department, KISL Radio, Santa and Mrs. Claus, Avalon Beautiful, Avalon Rotary Club, Catalina Island Saddle Club, and Lions Club all played significant roles in making the activities a huge success. Also, the businesses and residents who really decked the halls this year have made the season bright, even the midst of the dark cloud over so much of the holiday season.
Thank you.
That's the only comment.
That was great. Department head reports.
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got a couple items to report. We did a cleanup activity on the hillside rockfall debris behind the K-rail on Pebbley Beach Road and also on St. Catherine's Way. Public Works crew, along with the resources from Jordal Construction, completed a major cleanup behind the K-rail. Public Works crew is dressing up spot locations right now and is replacing the fence panels as we speak this week. There were, just for reference, there were 245 truckloads of material hauled, which yielded about 1,600 cubic yards that were removed. So you could see it was a major impact improvement there. We're anticipating that can last for three to five years before we have to do something like that again. And also, our maintenance activities will change there so that we're, now that we have the new excavator and dump truck, city crews can stay on top of it better. And then also to report out that Slater Waterproofing is putting the final touches on Mole Phase One, and the contractor will start demobilizing next week. So we'll be soon reopening the Wharf section of the mole. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Nope. Okay, thank you, Bob. That's exciting about Pebbley Beach and that the folks at the mole will be home in time for Christmas. Yes.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking. A couple things. First is, we are seeing more and more people complying with the health order. We get less calls of people not wearing masks. When we're out on patrol, we see people wearing masks and they're social distancing from one another. Every once in a while, we get that one or two people that are noncompliant, and we handle them appropriately. However, the majority of the Avalon residents are complying with the health order, which is very nice to see. I also want to remind everybody, when using your credit card for Christmas gifts, holiday gifts, make sure you're using legitimate websites. Use a website that the card number is not going to go to a private person. You want to use any of the, you know, they have the PayPal websites that protect your card completely. There's other companies too, not just PayPal, and we aren't endorsing any of them, but we just want to make sure you don't send your credit card number in an email to somebody because you're buying an item. That, and definitely not your social security number or any of the other things. With the last week or so until Christmas, a lot of people are still purchasing items with their credit cards, and we just don't want to see them taken advantage of. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Counsel, you're good? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor. Council city staff. In addition to all the COVID items, safety items that are at the forefront right now, I just want to quickly remind people with the holidays, remember to keep candles, the decorative candles, away from anything flammable in your house. Remember that some of your decorative lights are only rated for indoor or outdoor use. Be careful not to do the Griswold Christmas and string 100 strings of lights together and cause a fire hazard. Also, keep small children and pets away when you're cooking with hot stuff on the stove top. Be sure your Christmas tree doesn't block an exit in your home. And then lastly, just be sure to keep water added to your tree daily. Unless you have questions for me, that's all I have.
I think we're good? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is Matt Baker with the Finance Department. I wanted to let council know that Finance is wrapping up the fiscal year 20 audit. I'm hoping to have the auditors here, if not here, virtually here, to present those during the second meeting in January. As a revenue update, through October, our visitor-driven revenues had been exceeding our budget estimates, but given the latest shutdown, I do expect some of those gains to be lost over the next couple of months. Just as a reminder to the public and to council, that the Finance Department does report on those revenues. If you're interested in the specific figures, on the Finance Department's webpage, that's citiavallon.com/finance, under the Tourism Revenue Report section of that page. And then lastly, business licenses were, or excuse me, invoices for business licenses were mailed out last week. So you should be receiving your invoice. If you haven't received it already, in the next couple of days. If you haven't received it, please contact the Finance Department, and we will have a new one issued and prepared for you. And again, business license invoices are due January 15th. And that's all I have, unless there's questions.
And after January 15th, is there some kind of a-
Penalties apply after January 15th.
Okay. Okay. Great. And Mr. Hunky is not with us today, and I guess that's it for the staff.
I think we had Orin.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Orin, there you are, right in the middle. Whoops.
Yeah, we're not able to hear you yet, Orin.
Were you on mute? Can't hear you. Can anybody repeat what he said? So they can't hear me right now, Jordan, when I'm talking to them? Jordan can't hear me? What if, we can't hear-
I can hear you. We can hear you.
So what did Orin say? We couldn't hear Orin.
Couldn't hear what Orin said.
Nothing to report? Okay, still don't know what Orin said.
I think he said nothing.
I think nothing to report.
Nothing to report.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, well, five out of six, ain't bad. City manager report. Denise, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I had one item while we're waiting for her to come on. I did receive in terms of-
Nancy, I do not have anything.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead, Denise.
No, you said I did not have anything, and I was going to acknowledge for the written communication part of it. But go ahead, Michael.
Oh, yeah. For written communications, I received, the city received 16 total correspondence for item number nine. This is in regards to the ordinance for the CUP to transient rental license. There was 14 against the CUP ordinance and two for. And then we received one item for item number 10, which is for the urgency ordinance recommending council not extend those deadlines.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And do you have anything, Assistant City Manager?
I did not.
City Attorney?
Nothing, other than all those comments will be in and into the record for your consideration and council has been provided, all those letters.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councilmember report. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Thank you.
I'll start. It's Lisa. A few things. Attended the work group this week, and with regards to that, had a great conversation about kind of where we are and where we're going. Verizon has acknowledged known issues with cell service, and there's an executive level sort of ticket that can only be opened by a handful of people within the Verizon kind of ecosystem, and means that there are the concern filed, but also are people on the ground. So there are people from Verizon coming in with this pack, and will be having more return and are addressing kind of what those reoccurrences are. Jim Luchahan has been in contact with them and is kind of forming a great partnership. They're in communication with both regional and global experts on broadband, and hopefully we'll have meetings coming up probably after the New Year, where we'll invite some of those entities to meetings and calls to be able to gain information from them on kind of where they are and what they see as both where they're going and what needs to be solved. But we're still in the kind of act finding phase of this journey and hopeful to have some progress soon. So, Avalon, this contest, the census ended in such a cluster that we never actually announced who won the census contest that we held back at the, what was supposed to be the end of October, then became the end of September, then became October. To refresh everyone's memory, this was a total of seven prizes. People just had to submit that they had completed the census information and then were entered into the drawing. So Nancy Babdadeh won a $20 gift certificate to the Catalina. Laura Vandy Zandi won a $50 gift certificate to Love Catalina, which covers the- Juan Pedrosa won a $50 Love Catalina gift certificate. Taylor Marones won a $50 Love Catalina gift certificate. Dol Morna won a $50 Love Catalina gift certificate. And Ruby Gordon Ingle won a $100 gift certificate. The grand prize is a $500 gift certificate to Leo's, with inclusions with everything exceptions, is a $500 certificate going to Johnny Vickers. So congratulations to all of them. I have everyone's phone numbers, and I'll be reaching out tomorrow with details on how you can pick those up safely or receive them via email to use and to make that easy and hopefully, content and do. They're right now going on in Congress to hopefully move forward with the bills that are happening for aid for a number of people, including adding on an additional up to $300 per week for unemployment insurance. And also, a key thing for us, I think, is to help support nonprofits like the Chamber. This newest bill that's currently being reviewed is including 501(c)(6) for the first time for possible aid and also providing some relief to potentially cities and states. So if you have the chance tonight and want to take a break while we're in the middle of discussing or voting through some of the consent number, great time to call your congressman. If you're not sure who to call, you can dial 202-224-3121 to reach the House switchboard. That's 202-224-3121. Alan Mudd will be a great person to reach out to. Nancy Pelosi would be a great person to reach out to. Kamala Harris would be a great person to reach out to. And just let them know that you're in support of this bill getting passed to aid, everybody. This will hopefully help kind of at least put some into people's pockets, especially at this time of the year when they need it the most. So it's worth doing tonight if you can. They're actually in there, and it sounds like, see if they can vote this evening. I don't know if that's going to come to fruition or not. And then finally, I just wanted to pass on thanks to Bob and the City Works crew and the teams that they worked with. Pebbley Beach looks great. I drove it this week. There's actually more space on the road, and it turned out phenomenal. So thank you guys for working so hard on that. I'm encouraged to hear about the Mole Phase One and kind of getting that space back for people and hopefully having that space back where we can safely welcome visitors again for nonessential travel. And then I just wanted to let everyone know that Thursday, December 24th, at 6:00 p.m., I'm going to be stepping outside my house for two minutes and ringing a bell just to kind of help celebrate the holiday spirit, if you will. So if you guys want to join in, it's a nation will find stepping outside their door to get some fresh air, ring a bell for a couple of minutes, and see if we can get the community together, and that's at 6:00 p.m. So I'll put a reminder up on Facebook, and then also wanted to just wish families that are celebrating a happy sixth night of Pocico tonight as well. And that's all I have.
Michael or Yessenya?
I have just one thing. Thanks to City and Chamber for a great Shop Avalon Day, and we were excited to go ahead and do the Gingerbread House Contest. It went very well for everything that was thrown at us. Originally had 40 kits that were sent out, and then had 26 that actually participated, plus extras that showed up. It was a great event, and we are going to do it again next year when we could actually walk them and really see them. But it was, it was something that we really felt that we needed to get done, and we did it. And now we're ready for next year. That's all.
Great. Yessenya, welcome back. It's nice to see you, sweetheart.
Hello, everybody.
Can't wait to see that baby either.
I wanted to say, take the time to say thank you to actually our entire town. As we all know, it's been a struggle for my family, but this town has made it just a little easier, so thank all of you guys for everything.
You're welcome. And Mayor Protem?
Just attended Gateway City's Council of Government meeting since our last meeting, and happy birthday, Michael.
Oh.
And that's all I have.
Oh, that's, that's so cute.
Oh, and you know, I'm sorry, let me just add one more item. Just to reiterate a memo from the Catalina Express that it's really imperative for our community to please make boat reservations. We know that we are going to be traveling for various reasons, but I do know that Catalina Express is determining which vessels to take each day based on the number of reservations that they have, trying to make sure that they can social distance people as much as possible, and also keep their own crews as safely as possible. But also, you know, it's really important to remember that they're, it's really hurting all of us businesses. Everyone on the island is hurting based on the economy right now. No one person is, is being hit harder than the other, please don't get me wrong, but I do know that the Catalina Express is committed to running those boats every single day, and they're doing it at a loss. So if we could please help them in making these reservations, they'll know, you know, which vessels to use and hopefully cut down on some of the costs associated with running each of those boats. So other than that, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Minutes with the Mayor is tomorrow, and Lisa, you were saying the ringing of the bells is at 6 o'clock on Christmas Eve, right? That's so Santa, so Santa can find his way. I already have my bell. I'll be talking about it tomorrow. Also, there's not a lot of bells for sale in Avalon. I don't think Cindy has any at Chet's. I found one at Leo's. So maybe we could also use our wind chimes. Anyway, so that's that on a light note. Thank you. And again, the City of Avalon has a policy for anybody that's leaving the country has to quarantine for two weeks when they come back. I would encourage all businesses to do the same, and like I said last week, if they have a job to come back to. But it is very, we don't want to see the Christmas rush right after this Thanksgiving blow up. So please, everybody, take this seriously, and that's all I have. Alrighty. So presentations, I don't believe we have any tonight.
That's correct.
Oral communication, this is an opportunity for people out there in television land to speak on an item that is not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken. And Finance Director, do we have any?
I don't have any comments at this time, no.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Could we, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mayor. Could we please explain with our new process here, is the ability to submit public comment the same as it's been if we were still in council chambers, that it's still through the Granicus system, and is that still the only way to do public comment?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but ask@citivavlon.com, is that-
No, it's just the Granicus right now.
Okay. Well, read Consent Calendar.
On Consent Calendar, there are eight items total. Items one, two, and three are on the regular consent. The first item here is minutes, and that is approving the minutes from the December 1st, 2020, regular city council meeting. Item number two is on warrants, and the recommendation there is to approve total expenditures for November 14th, 2020 through December 4th, 2020, totaling approximately $1,130,772.35. Item number three is a resolution reciting the facts of the November 3rd, 2020, City Council Special Municipal Election, and this is to adopt a resolution reciting the facts of the City of Avalon Special Municipal Election held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. The next two items are on Consent Calendar as the City Council acting as the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees. Item number four is for Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees Minutes, to approve the minutes from the October 20th, 2020, Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees Minutes. Item number five is receive and file a report of the Chief Executive Officer's Board Report and Chief Financial Officer's Narrative Analysis. The next item on consent is the Council acting as the Successor Agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency. This is Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule, or ROPS, for the fiscal year 21, 22, and Successor Agency Administrative Budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution of the Successor Agency to the ACIA, approving a recognized ROPS schedule for the 21, 22, and Successor Agency Administrative Budget for fiscal year 21, 22. Item number seven is the Council acting as the Housing Authority, and this is the Housing Successor Agency Annual Report for fiscal year 1920. Recommended action for item number seven is to adopt a resolution approving a Housing Authority Successor Agency Annual Report for the fiscal year 2019, 2020. And then the last item on consent is as the city acting as the Successor Agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency and Housing Authority, and this is a renewal agreement with RSG Inc. for fiscal year 21, 22, Successor Agency and Housing Authority Consulting Services. And the recommendation is to authorize the City Manager or Agency Director to enter into a contract with RSG Inc. to provide Successor Agency and Housing Authority Consulting Services for fiscal year 2021, 2022, for an amount not to exceed $35,000.
Counsel, are there any items you want to pull or ask questions? Michael, I have a question for you. Could you still stay in touch with the hospital? On the report, they were talking about being able to do treatment infusions, and do you know what they were thinking of infusing, or does anybody know?
I do not.
What's that?
I do not.
Okay. That's going to be exciting, though, when that happens, so I'm assuming it'd be chemo and, but what, okay. And I know, I'm sure Jason's not on the call. Okay, so Counsel, what is your pleasure with the Consent Calendar? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve items one through nine.
One through-
One through eight.
One through eight.
I'm sorry, one through eight.
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Okay. Any comments? Roll call for the roll call vote?
Councilmember Delarosa?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Councilmember LaBelle?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McGugan-Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor Marshall?
Yes.
All ayes.
This is really a trip, watching you from this perspective. I hope we don't have to do this for very long, because I like to look over at you and see you, and this is kind of lonely up here without y'all. Okay, item number nine.
Yes. Item number nine is the continued, or the second reading, rather, of an ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Section 9-6.602, Article 6 of Chapter 9 of Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code. What this item is, is establishing a new transient rental licensing system to the municipal code. And I do have a PowerPoint. I'm just going to run over to the podium and set that up real quick. real quick. So just a quick overview, Counsel has been chatting about, or discussing this with the Planning Commission since late September of 2018, and this was presented back in November at the first reading. But really what this proposed ordinance is doing is to essentially transition the current existing regulation from a conditional use permit system, or land use entitlement, to a transient rental licensing scheme. This, if approved, would have transient rental licenses that would be approved annually. Existing CUPs for transient rentals would remain valid until the second sale of the property to which they are tied, and essentially upon the second sale, the buyer would have the ability to apply for a transient rental license as outlined in the ordinance. Transfer of the transient rental license through a family trust or through certain direct family members is permitted and would be treated as the first of two sales for the purposes of the amortization period. Guidelines and standards for approving the license, such as occupancy limits, management requirements, payment of transient occupancy tax, or TOT, et cetera, would remain the same and would be under the purview of the Planning Commission. Appeals of the Planning Commission's decision would then be heard, City Council, so no change there. Fees associated with the new transient rental licenses would be set at a subsequent meeting if this is approved by City Council Resolution. The Planning Commission, in consultation with the City Attorney, would also work to create rules and regulations to essentially transition the planning departments in processing the new transient rental license. And then the current CUP approval process of holding a public notice would remain intact prior to the issuance of transient rental license. This includes two years following, this also has the stipulation that two years following the effective date of the ordinance, the Planning Commission would reconsider those public notice requirements and potentially give the planning staff the administrative authority to then issue a license. Transient rental saturation would also be maintained at the current level, that's outlined in the current Avalon Municipal Code. However, based on discussion with Counsel at the last City Council meeting, as well as taking into effect some of the comments that the City has received, staff also came up with two alternative strategies should Counsel wish to not move forward with the second reading of this ordinance. Alternative Strategy 1 could be to amend the existing Avalon Municipal Code, or AMC, to require a defined minimum number of days per calendar or fiscal year. Right now, in order to keep your CUP, anybody can keep it as long as they rent it out for one day. This would actually increase the threshold, that the number of days that the rental unit would need to be rented, and it would also require that, not within a 12-month given period, but it would also define that per either calendar year or fiscal year. That's not actually defined currently in the municipal code. And then it would revoke any CUP for adhering, for not adhering to any requirements. If Counsel wished to address this strategy, it would be staff's recommendation to also implement some sort of amortization period to a minimum of one year, so to allow for the transition of those new changes to the code, as well as enforcement, that seemed like would be easier to transition those and to get people used to the new regulations, and then eventually impose a fine for any illegal transient rental operations, including failure to obtain a CUP and/or business license and failure to pay for TOT. As an alternative strategy, as another alternative strategy, staff could also go back and draft, and Counsel could consider adoption of a separate ordinance which would allow existing CUPs to remain, as is, however, require new transient rental licensing system for all new potential units. So everything would essentially stay the same. We would no longer issue out any more CUPs. Those with CUPs would continue to keep it and enjoy the benefit of the CUP, but anybody wishing to apply to be able to rent their unit out transiently would then need to apply for a license structure, and then we would end up essentially using two different systems for regulation purposes. So on staff's recommendation is really to have Counsel review and discuss these alternatives. If there is consensus, staff's recommendation is to have Counsel proceed forward with the CUP ordinance as presented with the second hearing, or if there's not, and Counsel wishes, provide direction to staff on another method of regulating transient occupancy rentals. And with that, that does conclude my presentation. However, before I turn it back to Counsel, I do have one specific message that I received, and the City received, from the Chair of the Planning Commission, Eric Huwer, and I wanted to read that into record. He writes, "Honorable City Council, thank you for charging the Planning Commission to revise our method of permitting transient rentals. The proposal in front of you is designed to reduce the chances that the cost of housing will increase and to better protect the tranquility of neighboring residents. The proposal for you is a result of meetings with you, the City Council, and the public, the energy and the commitment of our legal and planning staff, and a considerable amount of Planning Commissioners' time. For this reason, please give a considerable weight to the Planning Commission's recommendations for this proposal. The process it took to get to this point and the impact your decision will have on this and future commission efforts. Thank you, Eric Huwer, Chair of the Planning Commission." As also mentioned, the City did receive other letters that are included in your packet. We received a total of fourteen letters that were essentially against the current CUP as presented for the hearing. Two of them, including Eric's, was listed as on, for approval. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I guess Counsel, based on the last City Council meeting and all of the letters that we're getting from these, you know, from folks really not in favor of the system, and people questioning, well, what was the intent of all of this? You know, it's not, and I believe that I've changed my tune, and this first alternative is something that I felt would be valid because it doesn't, I'll just give you my quick little rundown. And I know I talked with Michael about it tonight, and I've spoken to other people, even CIVR, and they say this sounds like a good system. My concern is, we're not getting money from the people that are just giving us $12 a year. That's not the intent of maintaining a CUP. So the thought is, if, and the City Attorney can chime into this, because there was an arbitrary, like fifteen days, they would need to rent it out to keep it. Because why keep something you're not going to use? And if they're not using it, that might give an opportunity for somebody else who wants to have a CUP, so we can still maintain some visitors through the rental business, but for people to just sit on them doesn't make any sense to me at all. So that's why I was thinking, if you had a minimum number of days, this whole thing about selling it to the second and third, first and second person would go by the wayside. So Lisa, let's say you have a CUP on your property, you sell your property, and you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, you're renting it out, just like so many of the people are. But if you sell that and you sell it to Michael, and Michael buys it, and if Michael doesn't use the CUP, then he would lose it. So, and that would give an opportunity for maybe somebody else, it gives, because again, we're not making any money off of the units that are sitting there vacant, giving us $12, $36, $72. That's not the intent of having a CUP. So that's kind of my premise, and I'm assuming it's legal, or Scott wouldn't have put the days and things like that in this, in this kind of plan.
Yeah, if I could just address that, the current ordinance provides that in order to maintain a CUP, you have to at least use it once a year, and if you don't use it once a year, it is subject to revocation, and we're currently going through a revocation process. The thought, though, is that the whole purpose of the CUP was to allow people to open their homes up to visitors, to help them either, you know, get some additional money to pay their mortgage, or to frankly allow some people the option of staying in Avalon for, staying at home when they visit Avalon. And so by only requiring one day, you're really not accomplishing that. So the Council is within its authority to set a number. It's not going to be an arbitrary number, it can be 10, 10, 15. What you think would be a reasonable number for people to say, to say, if you want to have a CUP, and if the purpose is to open the home for visitors and to increase revenue to the City, should there be a minimum number of days you have to use that home? Right now, it's set at one, you could raise that. If you did, what we'd recommend is that we wait at least a year for that to new effect, so people can kind of get used to it, and then we go forward. At the same time, we'd look at amending the ordinance, we'd come back to you for some fees, for people violating. Right now, it's just your standard fees that are for violation of, you know, your municipal code. There are many cities that have said that if you're cheating the system and you're renting out your property and you're not collecting taxes and remitting them to the City, you'll get severe penalties. Some are as high as $1,000, $2,000 for a violation, some say it's 40% or 50% of all the rents that you collect in the year. We could have a, we could have a discussion of the Counsel, but so it would be, option one would be two parts. One, everything remains the same, no licenses, just all CUPs, but a minimum use that's larger than one day, and then we come back to you with some increased penalties to really encourage people to actually report their taxes, pay their taxes. And then the second alternative, which we haven't gotten to, was also just you keep it the same for those that have CUPs, and then for new people coming in, they don't get a CUP, they get a license. So it creates the ability to, going forward, everyone, everyone that has what they have right now maintains it, doesn't affect them, going forward, everyone who comes in just gets a license.
And I don't even, but I don't, excuse me Cindy, but I don't know why we'd have to go to, I don't know why it couldn't, it could still be a CUP, why would we have to do the license if it's, if you don't use it, you lose it, and then if you use somebody and you sell your property, that person then comes in and applies again for a CUP, very simply. But go ahead, Cindy.
I just have a clarification question on the proposed ordinance. On page one of our agenda item down at the bottom, it says, "Transient licenses must be renewed annually," as opposed to running with the land like transient rental CUPs. Under this particular ordinance, not alternative one or two, but under this proposal that's here, is that for all new ones? Because the next item down is existing CUPs for transient rentals would remain valid until the second sale of the property to which they are tied, which would be that amortization period. So I'm just wondering, when we say transient rentals would have to renew annually, that's these new ones from today forward?
That's correct. You would be required to get a license every year, you just renew your license, much like you have to do for a business license. And the whole premise of that is, we just want to make certain that the property owner is the same property owner.
But do we, but why do we care? I mean, under that scenario...
The issue with this, the reason why the original move from a CUP to a licensed system was looked at was a couple of different reasons. The first was what Scott just mentioned about being able to track who the owner of the property is and ensure that that person is aware of what, how they're supposed to operate the CUP, the licensing for the transient rental. The second was to actually make it a more fair and equitable playing field for everyone, that because of a CUP, the value of homes was being increased by something that the City was permitting, as opposed to something that was part of the property, and it was traveling with the land and the house as opposed to the owner. And this is a permitted thing by a person, to a person that owns a property, or to a trust that owns a property, as opposed to something that the house carries with it. So the point was to try to make that a more level playing field by adjusting that to say, you don't automatically get this with the house when you buy it, this is something that you as a resident of Avalon and a homeowner can apply for, and it's a license as the person, as opposed to your permit for the house. And so that was where that first part of the reasoning came in. I don't necessarily mind the idea of adding on additional details regarding the minimum amount of stay. I think that, I know, I was just looking at some of the housing bills that are coming up in the California State Legislature, and they're putting caps on certain, you know, safety and health hazard violations for short-term rentals like this, and so those were capping out at like $1,500, $2,000, $3,000, $5,000, depending on what the infraction was. I don't have an issue with that. I think there's a lot of confusion among the public, including the letters that we received. Probably more than half of them said they would actually be okay with having the two sale, but then at the top said it sounds like it's probably illegal, so I'm assuming that most of that probably illegal sentence was from a form letter from one of the management properties, or something that someone put together for everyone to kind of bounce off of. But then half of the people seem to actually be okay with the idea of it traveling through a trust through generations, which is what most homeowners, I think, that have a CUP right now are looking to do. And so I'm not sure that most people fully understand exactly what this is doing, and that's kind of clear. So I think what it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is any new ones that are permitted now would be on the licensed system, and we could add an extra time in if we wanted to, to amortize that. I don't know that we need to, but we can. And then anyone that has a CUP, we're not taking away CUPs. Nobody on the Counsel is saying we don't want CUPs. That's not what this is doing. This is saying, if you have a CUP, you keep it as the current owner, they're not taking it away. You have the ability to then pass it to someone else, the second owner, and that's counted as one sale. And whether that goes into a trust that then becomes a trust in perpetuity that gets passed down through the trust and there's no issue, and you keep the CUP forever, or gets passed to a non-family homeowner, and that person gets to also keep the CUP with the run of their property for as long they own the property. When that person goes to sell it, they know that that second sale is what will trigger it as the last time that they'll have a CUP, and then it goes to a license after that. So I think that that's, and Annie had even mentioned, that's a long time. That could be, you know, sixty years times two, potentially. So we're looking at 120 years from now, this could be a thing. So I think that's what I'm kind of saying, like, it makes sense, they worked out the details for so long, and this was with public input, and everyone had to come at multiple meetings, including a joint meeting. So I'm still saying I think we stick with the first one.
Well, I don't know why, first of all, how that's going to be followed up in 120 years, number one. We're going to all be dead, Matt's not going to be here, sorry, Matt, you're not going to be here in 120. The thing is, I think it's time to, trying to keep it simple. If we're just saying, you have your CUP, you use it so much, so we're guaranteed some money, whatever that dollar amount be, it's very simple. If you sell your house, no harm, no foul. If you sell it three or four times, or whatever down the line, it doesn't matter. The current owner will decide if they want to maintain that CUP. If they don't, they lose it. They sell the house again, then that person could say, oh, I want a CUP on it, and they come back to the City and get a CUP. It seems so much simpler to me. I don't know, and I'm getting people in favor of that, instead of fourteen letters, we're getting with all of the confusion. So...
Right, but I think the way you're saying it, Annie, is that that person would come back to get a CUP once it was sold?
No, 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 no.
If it stays as a CUP, it transfers with the house.
It transfers with the house, but if you choose not to use it for that year, your first year, if you don't get a business license and you don't lose it, then you lose it, and then maybe somebody else can get one somewhere down the line. So it could stay, as long as they keep playing the CUP game, it stays forever. And, oh, I like the... And, oh, I like the delay in this, my hand's going woo. Anyway, uh, it just seems so much simpler to me. So the question also I have is to Matt, because I had him do a little homework. Um, of the 300 vacation rentals that we have, how many of those are paying less than a couple hundred dollars a year? Tell me what stat you came up with.
Just some high level numbers. Um, so we had just over 300 short-term rentals paid TOT, um, at least once during fiscal year 20. So that's July 2019 to June 20. Of those 300, we had about 25 to 30 that paid, uh, less than $100 with six properties paying only $12, as Annie mentioned earlier. Um, and in fiscal year 20, and granted this was, you know, with the lockdowns in April and May, uh, the city received 1.2 million in, um, TOT from short-term rentals. So that would be an average of, uh, close to $4,000, uh, per property. Um, but as you can see, about 8% of the properties paid less than $100 and 2% or so paid just $12.
So those are the kinds of people, keeping it simple, those are the kinds of people, if we had a number of days or a threshold of, I don't know, 800, whatever, because the least expensive rent overnight is $275. And you know, they go up to probably 600 and 700 dollars depending, could be Hamilton Cove or some of the nicer places. And, and those people right now, though, a lot of those, they're doing the right thing. They're paying us and we're fine with that. It's these few people that on this low threshold that are just doing it a little bit to keep the CUP that I think should be paying some amount of money other than $12 to maintain a CUP. Michael?
The night after we discussed this and did, and approved the first reading, the city of Laguna Beach had the same discussion. They have gone from CUPs to licenses. The only difference is they grandfathered all the current CUPs. That's my issue with this whole thing. I like the idea of going forward as with the licenses, but I think that all the current CUPs get grandfathered. And, and Lisa, in 120 years, those will probably go away and they'll all be, and everybody will be in the licensing process. But right now, people bought these properties with, and, and, and I'm just glad that finally people are admitting that yes, there is a value to the CUP, um, because we were told for years that there wasn't, knowing that realtors were saying, no, there is a value and you can get a CUP. I'm glad that that's finally out, that yes, there is a value to the CUP. But my issue being that the, the people that currently have them should be grandfathered and everything going forward is the license. That's my big gripe with this, is that what other cities are doing is they're going to the licensing process, but everybody else is being grandfathered. That's my only reason I will not vote for this currently, is that we're not going to grandfather the current CUPs.
And I, I would just say one thing. Laguna Beach did that, but some cities have said, we're going to a licensing and we're going to give you two years, not two generations. So some, some cities have, have switched and have not ended grandfathering, but only done it for a couple of years. We're suggesting two sales.
But who's taking them away, Michael? I don't understand. Under this, this, this alternative one, we're not taking them away. We're just saying you don't use them. Why should they have something they're not going to use?
No, 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 I, no, Annie, I agree, I agree that anybody who's not renting it for so many, many days, they should, they should have to pay up.
Okay, and I don't care.
As to, my, my, my whole thing is that going forward, yes, licensing, but anybody that's got a CUP currently, that they get grandfathered. That's my, that's my big thing. The other is, you know, if, if, because these people who have them, rent it for one night and get to keep that CUP indefinitely, that doesn't make any sense. Because there's no reason for us to be giving them that benefit if we're not getting anything back in return, except for $12. So that's, that's mine.
So I don't care.
Okay, but wait, 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 Annie, wait. I need to ask this question before we go further. Michael, you were talking about the, the value and that now that people are admitting the value. So one of my comments in my, what I've written up for tonight, what is the value of the CUP? What makes it valuable to the, what is the amount that makes it valuable to the property? I'm trying to figure out, when people are saying it increases the value of a home, what is that increase in value?
That I could not tell you.
Right.
Because the way that I looked at it, when I was really trying to delve into this, is anybody can go right now, today, anybody can go and pay, what, $3,700 and apply for a CUP. So let's just say that we have a million dollar home that is either going to be sold to somebody who's going to live in it year round, or is going to be sold to somebody for an investment property. The only difference in investment value that I can think of is the fact that if it had a CUP prior, somebody's got records to indicate what the income was on that property. So if I don't live there, or I'm sorry, if I live in my home year round, I don't have the ability to say, this is what the rental value of my home is because I'm living in it. So if I want to sell my home without a CUP for a million dollars and the market says it's only worth a million dollars, to me, I don't understand what this added value is because anybody can go and apply for a CUP for $3,700 and be granted it. So I'm waiting for somebody to explain to me, what is this increased value that I can take into consideration in making this decision?
Well, Cindy, I hear what you're saying, but I don't know why it matters. If that CUP continues, when you own your house and you're renting it out as a CUP and you sell it to me and I choose, choose to or not use the CUP, it doesn't matter what the value is. Because.
What matters in this conversation is that one of the reasons it was brought up that this even went to the planning commission was that the, the property values are increased in Avalon because a property has a CUP. And I'm trying to figure out if you, if you have a million dollar home for sale, and that's just the, the quickest arbitrary number I can come up with. If you have a million dollar house for sale, if it has a CUP today, what is its value? If it doesn't have a CUP, is that house worth 900,000 or is that house worth 800,000? What is the value add? Because that's, it, it's been brought up many times that that was one of the reasons for this even going forward was that CUPs increase the value, property values on the island, which makes it thus more difficult for a year-round resident to purchase a home here because it has a CUP. And I, I'm trying to find proof and.
Okay, I, I will explain at least, at least what has come up through the two years of, of public comments. And again, this is my, based upon my recollection. There, there, there were two things. Some people would say, well, I don't have to go through that process with the planning commission. I don't have to pay that fee. Therefore, this house in and of itself, all things being equal, is worth the, the fee that I don't have to pay and the trouble of going through the planning commission and the uncertainty. So that's more value. Second, if the house has an established record of being rented out for the weekend, then that house would have established stream of income from, from, coming from that house. And all things being equal, um, you could, you could get more for that house hypothetically if you sold it because you've got an established income coming with it. That assumes though, it assumes that you want to continue to use that house for that vacation rental. Because it would hypothetically have no value if you were not going to use it as a CUP.
So if all I've got, so, so you have a place at Hamilton Cove that rents, you know, four months out of the year and you've got one that rents one day and they're both three-bedroom whatevers, though, they're still worth the same value. I mean, they're still worth the same value, it's just that somebody used their CUP and somebody didn't. So.
And again, that was one of the, that was one of the factors. Another factor, um, that was brought up by, uh, by a couple homeowners when they came um, in support of this concept, was that, um, if you have homes that are being used as rental properties, um, on the weekend, that then reduces the long-term of full-time housing. Because those properties will continue to be used for those vacation rentals and that a family of Avalon who wants to live there full-time will never have access to that property because it's being used as a vacation home. And part of the, the goals of our general plan is to encourage full-time housing for Avalon residents. And so, um, again, that was one of the considerations that came up a lot during this process.
And I, I see you, Cindy, you're kind of shaking your head on that one. And that, that is a premise definitely. However, when somebody buys their home and pays 600,000 or a million dollars for it, if they choose to not stay in it or, you know, or just want to leave it there blank, that's not gonna, that's kind of null and void on the housing market. I mean, it has to be somebody local trying to apply for it. I'm not being very clear, but, um.
I think, I think, and maybe this is something that I, I want to say came up in maybe the first or second planning commission meeting where they were discussing it. There was a, a, the idea that having the CUP attached to the home incentivized off-island ownership to then purchase the home for the purpose solely of having a vacation rental. And again, not devaluing vacation rentals, not devaluing people who make their second homes here and utilize their homes as vacation rentals. It's their absolute right as a homeowner. I don't have any issue with that. The idea of knowing that you could sell a home easier or potentially faster because you have a CUP attached to it, the idea of thinking, okay, the CUP that I'm, the, the home that I'm buying is going to be able to pay for the mortgage payment, the electrical, whatever bills I have, all these things, lining that up is a great business move. I just don't know that it's the best business move for a town with a space that is limited. Could potentially, and again, I, people were mentioning unintended consequences and that's the unfortunate part of trying to create policy and not being able to have a crystal ball in front of us. I don't see people deciding not to have CUPs. I don't see people choosing not to use their homes as vacation rentals.
Right.
I don't see this change remedy making that shift for people. I just, I'm not, I, I, again, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't see that happening because of this. However, the potential impossibility to incentivize people on the island, especially first-time home buyers, to be able to own a property that doesn't necessarily carry the automatic incentive of being a vacation rental and an income property, there is, I think personally, a value that is, that comes intrinsically with something that has that permit already attached to it. There is a value there. I've heard people value it as little as 20 to 40,000 dollars. I've heard people value it as high as 80 to 100,000 dollars, depending on the property on the island. I've heard people who have just recently purchased homes and made them specifically into vacation rentals within the last two years, say that the amount of money they made in the past two years, included, including during COVID, even with numbers being down, has covered the anticipated amount of money and then some of what they expected to make from a vacation rental property in Avalon. It's not something that's going to lose them the value, the ability to make income. And it's not something that's going to prohibit people from still being able to do this. In fact, I think the licensing actually eventually will make this an easier process for people to do if they choose to, which is potentially one of the unintended consequences. Um, but in discussing this and discussing the grandfathering, Michael, I know that people have a concern with, we were talking originally about not grandfathering it. Everyone would switch the licenses immediately. That, of course, naturally freaked everyone out. We discussed grandfathering forever. That worried people as well. Then got to the kind of consensus over several meetings and a joint session of doing the two-generation hold, and even discussing with Scott, the idea of the trust. And that seemed to be a common middle ground that would then allow families especially to hold that license permit in perpetuity within their family in the trust. Even if the names in the trust changed, they would still be able to hold that permit with the house in the trust. And so I'm, I understand people's frustration and understand kind of where they're coming from, but also think in comparison to a number of cities and other entities, we're actually being extremely, um, I don't know what the right word is, it's not benevolent, but it's extremely understanding of trying to value that. The majority of people would say that if there was any value in you selling your house with the detached, and I would assume that people think there's a value there because they wouldn't be upset if there wasn't, um, has been amortized over the length of your ownership of property and will also be amortized over not just the next one, but the second one after that still. That's a lot of time to make back up the lack of value that you perceive you may not have on your house, that you're, that people are claiming there isn't a value to this. There is a value somewhere. So, um, yeah, I think that's kind of where I'm landing on this. I would also argue maybe, I, I don't know, and I think kind of trying to discuss this out, maybe even a different meeting would be appropriate for this part of it. If we're issuing a license, if you get a driver's license from the state of California, you're not required to use your license for a minimum number of days. You pay for the license fee when you get the license and then you have that license for however long that license lasts and then it expires and you come back and get another one. I don't know if someone is paying an annual fee, but I would have a requirement for them to have to utilize that license to keep it, other than them doing the annual update. So that's another point of discussion.
An annual update, from what I understand, if you, we have, we're not allowed to just say $2,000 to maintain your CUP. It has to be justified with time spent administratively and whatever to keep it into, to effect. But doing the days does. And so if Michael rents his place for 450 a night and you went, yours for 200 and it's for 10 or 15 days, that's the amount of money that the city would get. But it would not be $12. It would not be $100. It would not be $72. Again, 80, what, 92% of the people are doing what we want them to do, other than those that are being sneaky. So it's just cleaning up this. And again, that license will stay with the, with the Lovell family until you sell the house and if, and then once those people, you sell it, you'll get your perceived value out of that. And if those people decide they don't want to put a CUP on it, they don't want to pay it, then it goes away in a year. So, so I, it seems so simple to me. I just don't get it.
Is there a way, Matt, to tell us how much people make on average with their CUPs attached to their homes?
The, the average CUP, uh, pays the city 4,000 to 5,000 a year in, um, in TOT tax. Again, that, that varies, some are, you know, $100 a year and some are tens of thousands of dollars, but the average amount, uh, over a year would be somewhere 4,000 to 5,000 would be my estimate.
So I, I think in answer to, uh, council member De La Rosa's question, if they're paying $4,000 and let's just say it's a, it's a 10% fee, then they're getting $40,000 from the use of that property.
And just for clarification, um, currently in the Avalon municipal code, uh, you have to rent your, uh, unit at least one day or you risk losing it in a revocation hearing. And that's the process that Scott was, uh, referring to before. So we already have that provision. Uh, it's just, uh, the alternative strategy would be upping the threshold.
And we're in the process of sometime after the first of the year, doing revocation hearings for numerous reasons, no business license, no whatever.
That's correct.
And there's how many of those?
Uh, there was 11 properties that were on the list. Uh, four or five have already voluntarily given their, uh, them up and we're currently in the process of sifting through the other six.
So we, and we love these people that are giving us $10,000 a year, but $10,000 a year, and that's 92% of the people that are doing a good job. It's that 8% that, that we would be working on and simplifying the system. It's that 8% that, that we would be working on and simplifying the system. So you can, so you can sell it with your CUP and get whatever you want and the next person can decide what they want to do with it. And so it's none of this, ancestries and trusts and none of that, which is very simple. So let me start back, I mean, let's, on the existing ordinance, that, are we wanting to take a vote on this to see if we have consensus to proceed with this one or for starters? And then if this one doesn't pass, we can look at maybe something along this, this line?
Annie, can I ask a question real quick?
Of course.
And to me, this question hasn't been answered. What is your, what is the outcome of doing this? What is your perceived outcome of doing this?
Okay.
Is it that we're going to open up miraculously housing for people?
Not at all.
That people can be able to afford housing here on the island?
No, no, no.
What is, what, what is the outcome of this?
One of the main reasons is to get money that's due to the city.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about changing the process.
Oh, number one, it simplifies it greatly.
No, no.
Annie? I, I, I think Councilmember Ponce's question is, his first consideration is the ordinance that was, had its first reading.
Right.
Okay. What is the reason for bringing that forward? Is that correct?
Correct.
Bringing it forward or not bringing it forward?
I think the mayor is saying, I think the mayor is saying right now it's her position that she'd rather have an alternative than was at the first reading.
Yes. I think this is very complicated. We have 14 letters. I'm not concerned about somebody talking about suing us, but none of us want to deal with that. It costs the city money, it will cost them money. So it, simplifying it, it makes more sense. You know, we realize it's not going to help affordable housing. That's the city's responsibility to build affordable housing. CUPs don't solve that at all. And, and the people, unfortunately, that are able, a lot of the people that are able to buy the places, that's fine, they can buy them, but they may, we still have the thing that they may not get a CUP on there, so that is good. I mean, that's what the planning commission does. So I just think it simplifies the thing, that not having to worry about somebody in 60 years saying, well, what ever happened to old Joe's place, you know? And, I mean, that's ridiculous. That is, if enforcement has been some of our biggest problems, this is very simple. They fill out, they give us their business license every year. We give them the rules, that whole thing about what they're responsible to do. We give them the rules every year when they renew their per, their license or permit, I don't care what you call it. And they, they get that and it says you have to have a property manager or you have to have a name, you have to do this, you have to do that. That's, it's just give it to them every year and then it's simple. And then at some point, we then decide, and I think to, to make the decision about how many days and that kind of thing, it probably should be the finance department, maybe some of the vacation rental people that, you know, what kind of money is out there so that we can know kind of realistically. Again, and we would have a year to do this because we still have to get through this COVID thing and so.
To answer Michael's question, the reason that I'm in support of doing this was to level the playing field, to make the item that is being provided from the city a license that goes with the owner, not with the home. But the adjustment for those that already had CUPs to grandfather those in for two generations or into a family trust and to allow for that length of time and awareness upon sale at the end of those two generations, that then people would be able to understand exactly what the value of the home was. The goal was to try to level the playing field in terms of being able to ensure that the cost of homes wasn't incentivizing sales specifically for the purpose of a vacation rental. Those are the things that I came to this with and that's my understanding. May others may have others.
Unless we had some study done to do the research on that, quantifying all of that, I think that it's, it's, it's not necessary to do because we all kind of know it does, but so, but so what? You know, if we want to help people with housing, we've got to find another way to do it other than the, the home sale. Well, anyway, so I can see you and I disagree and that's perfectly fine, Lisa. That's what this is all about. I don't know what the rest of you are thinking. So Yessenya, Cindy and.
So the discussion is right now is, is do, is there, because we don't want to go and read the whole ordinance out. I think we're looking at, is there a consensus, we need three votes to pass an ordinance? So are there three votes to have the second reading of this ordinance? And so that would be the easiest thing, which would be to, to, two generations license going forward.
Okay. Somebody want to make that motion?
I would support a motion in favor of that.
Is there a second?
I would second it.
Okay.
Who is the second? Sorry.
Uh, Yessenya.
And.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Is this only, this motion is to just see if we have consensus on the CUP, uh, changing to a license?
Correct.
The second reading as is.
Second reading as is, yes.
Yes.
Second reading as is.
Which means if it, if we pa, if we vote yes and it passes, then the ordinance sits in place.
Correct.
Okay. I, I guess if we're voting on the ordinance, I would like to just make my last couple comments because while I'm fine with, I understand wanting to move to all since, but I do agree that that should happen from today forward. I don't, I'm not 100% reconciled in my own thoughts that I want to take something away from a homeowner who has, has had it all this time. But I do want to be in favor of that going forward. And, and I don't even feel totally confident in my own ability to vote on this right now because there are still, in my opinion, some additional questions to be answered. I, I still don't really believe that there is as much of a increase in property value. And as a businessperson, I am trying to, I've been really trying to put a lot of effort into that and it's no different than, you know, looking at buying properties in other areas. I mean, it's, so I'm not, I'm not agreeing that the value add to a property is what it is. And I just feel very uncomfortable about taking away something that people have already had. And I know that, Lisa, you mentioned that, you know, today what I have, I can sell to somebody else. So I am whole, but divulging that information to the next person, then if they want to sell, then they have to disclose that, you know, they will, that they don't have the same, the same value or the same asset that that current person had. So I think that's where I'm struggling is I see both sides of that, but I, I just am really torn on what that decision is. So I, I would like, Sarah, if you could help give me a little bit more perspective or, or Michael, I saw you raise your hand. Like I would really love to hear more about how your constituents feel in that department.
Let me, let me just say some information that was just sent to me. Current mortgage and refinance rates for December 2020, $4,560. Times that by 12 is $54,000 plus the $11,000 you pay on property tax. I'm sorry, a lot of these places are not making that amount of money back to cover that cost. They're making money back to cover utilities, property taxes, that type of thing, yes. But this is just not paying for the entire property. So not everybody, and it all depends on the property as to what you're getting back in return.
Right.
So it's, it's, and I understand Lisa's idea of getting it onto a level of playing field, but I'm trying to figure out what that level of playing field is. Is it for somebody to be able to buy a property here on the island? Because a lot of these houses have been owned by families forever and a lot of them don't have trust, it gets passed down to somebody.
And I have a question.
I have no problem.
We're not giving people from the island that chance to be homeowners and that to me is the problem.
But Yessenya, on, on that, on that note, how many people, and I, I don't mean anything by it, but how many people can afford, that live here on the island and work here on the island, can really afford to buy some of these houses that do get bought that have CUPs?
Or don't have CUPs.
When we, when we had, when we had the first-time homebuyers program that the city was doing that I was involved with, we had a hard time qualifying people for the, for the properties that were open because they made too much money. They didn't, they didn't, they were too low, so that we were giving them 30,000, 40,000 dollars for down payment assistance and that just, we just, it's just.
Michael, one of them was 200,000 dollars.
Yeah, some of them were 200,000 dollars. So it, it, and it's, it's, it's what, it's that these people that have these properties, they're not going to open it up to year-round rental. They're, they're going to want to save it for their family to be able to use. So, and like I said, I don't have a problem with us going forward and doing the licensing. I just think we should grandfather the people that have already got them.
Okay, let me ask another question. Cindy, you said you don't know about, you know, taking away something. Under alternative one, what are you taking away?
Under alternative one?
Yes, where you maybe have to rent it 15 days a year. What are you actually taking away?
So under alternative one, it, it's essentially grandfathered in. If you have it now, it just stays with the property in perpetuity.
No, not in perpetuity.
Is that correct?
A little bit more. If you use it more than one day a year.
Okay. So the perpetuity is if every year you do those 15 days, every year do you do those 15 days? When you don't do those 15 days, you lose it because you're not using it.
You know, really that to me is a no-brainer. You just, you know, you pay your 12% on 15 nights at 100 dollars, you pay that as a fee and continue your.
Yeah.
License for the next year.
Yes.
So I see that, but what you asked us to vote on was the ordinance as it was written. And, and that's where, that, that's why I stopped before we took a vote because you asked us to vote on one, not alternate.
No, 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 no.
You asked us to vote on what the ordinance was.
We have to get it out of the way. We either keep it or get it out of the way. So that's why I said, is there a motion? Because if this one dies on the original ordinance, then that's dead. Then we're going to start looking at an alternative or another way.
Yeah. What, what, uh, what city staff is looking for is if council wishes to proceed forward with passing the ordinance and continuing on with the second, if council wishes not to, they would vote against that and then provide direction on which alternative strategy to pursue and there would be no additional actions taken. Council staff would then take the direction from council, do some research, reconvene with the planning commission and then bring back a proposal for council to consider based on the alternative strategy that they asked for at a subsequent city council meeting.
So there is a motion made by Lisa and is, was there a second by Yessenya, I believe?
Yeah, yes. And the purpose of this motion is just to count votes because there's a formal motion for the second reading where we have to read the entire title of the ordinance. So the purpose of this is just to see if there are three votes to go to that formal reading strategy.
Formal reading to, to put it in or to get, to adopt? Okay. All right. Is everybody clear? So there was a motion and a second to proceed with this, the first one, the big one that we read last time. Okay, it's been motion and a second. Let's call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Lavell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
No.
Mayor Protem Magugan-Cassidy?
Oh God.
Mayor Marshall?
No.
Uh, motion passes, three yeses, two noes.
Oh my goodness. Yes, Cindy.
So then we, um, the motion, the formal motion, if you could, if somebody makes a motion to adopt the ordinance and read the title of the ordinance into the record, if one of the, one of you three doesn't want to do that, I'll do that. Just give me direction.
You could please.
Okay, the, uh, the motion before the council would be to raise further readings and adopt an ordinance of the city of Avalon amending section 9-6.602 of article 6 of chapter 6 of title 9 of the Avalon municipal code, deleting subsections D through F of section 9-8.404 of article 4 of chapter, of title 9 of the Avalon municipal code, amending section 9-8.801 of article 8 of chapter 8 of title 9 of the Avalon municipal code, amending subsection B of section 9-8.802 of article 8 of chapter 8 of title 9 of the Avalon municipal code and adding a new article 3 to chapter 1 of title 3 of the Avalon municipal code to establish a new transient rental licensing system.
Way to go, Scott. Okay, so now we have to vote again?
Yes.
So I moved to approve that, but I think Scott, there might have been a line that got left out, um, just to amend, deleting subsection D through F of section 8-8.404 of article 4 of chapter 8 of title 9 in the Avalon municipal code and then amending section 9-8. That third line just got left out of the reading.
Okay, then that'll be added in. Thank you for that correction.
Scott?
Yes?
Scott, I just sent a message. Can you, I sent a direct message. Can you read my message, please?
Yes.
Out loud?
And just tell me yes or no.
Is it a text message or an email?
No, it's on the, it's on the.
It's on the Zoom.
All right.
You know what, you know what, never mind, just move forward. Just, please just move forward.
Okay.
So you have a, a motion by Councilmember Lavell?
So moved by Lisa, yeah.
Yessenya going a second again?
I will second.
Okay, motion is second. What, what's that mean, Scott?
Okay.
Oh, call for the.
No, he's, he's to me. I'm, Scott, I'm okay, just move forward.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Lavell?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
No.
Mayor Protem Magugan-Cassidy?
Yes.
Mayor, uh, Marshall?
No.
Motion carries, uh, three with two noes.
Wow, okay. Now let's move on to.
And I, I just want to say now that I wanted to finish the vote before I said this. The, very honestly speaking, the pit that I feel in my stomach right now was causing me to want to change my vote to a no. But then I'm realizing that I've spoke to a number of the planning commissioners today that were all, worked really hard on this and really felt that they hashed it out enough, that they took public comment, that they saw everybody's concerns ahead of time and what. And what came to me after wanting to determine, wanting to change my vote was that the planning commission did their job. And even though it makes me feel very uncomfortable and very worried for some, it is what we asked them to do. And I want to respect the recommendations that the planning commission sent to us and all of their hard work. So thank you to the commission and Lisa yourself as a commissioner prior for working on this. And this is one of those really hard decisions.
Cindy, and I respect, Cindy, I respect your respect. But through this whole process for the last two years, the only time people started speaking up was in the last couple of weeks. They weren't jamming the planning commission during all of that time. They were sitting up here with seven people deciding it. Now we're seeing the backlash of what that is. And so I respect the work that they did. However, I'm just a little concerned going forward, but I respect your vote.
Me, and I'm sorry, did we also open that up to public comment before we finalized the vote?
Did we receive any public comment? Michael?
I'm refreshing just now, but I don't believe, no, we have not received any additional public comment through Granicus.
Good point, Cindy. Thank you. Okay, that's item number eight down, and now we're going to number nine.
Actually, number 10.
What happened?
Items one through eight were consent. That was item number nine. We're now on item number 10.
Excuse me, councilmember Lavelle has a question. Yes?
Yeah, Annie, I didn't know if you wanted to bring back for discussion in the future the idea of the minimum number of nights, if that's something that you wanted to still be discussing moving ahead.
If that can happen going forward, I think most definitely. Scott?
We can, any commission look at this and come up with a recommendation for a change in that requirement from, moving it from one day to other days.
I know when we just had that, when we had that joint meeting with them, Cindy, you know, a couple of years ago, whenever that was, I brought that thing up about a minimum. And members of, a couple of members of the group kind of said absolutely not. But now, maybe that will change. Because realizing that we're wanting to also make money for the city of Avalon is very important. So, okay, all righty. Now let's, so yes, if we can bring that back, that'd be perfect.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Lisa. That's great. Okay, item number 10.
Yeah, item number 10 is a review of the urgency ordinance U-1189-20 to discuss and provide direction if necessary. Staff recommendation is to align the city policy with the state of California and/or Los Angeles County. The urgency ordinance has a couple different provisions in it. One of them is the temporary moratorium on rent increases for residential tenants. This is set to expire on January 1st of 2021. There's also two moratoriums on evictions for non-payment of rent. One is for residential tenants, another one is by commercial tenants. Both of these expired when the county of Los Angeles entered into stage three. This was back in June 11th of 2020, which six months after that would put us into December 11th, 2020. And then the third one would be enacting a curfew on ordering restrictions that are in effect until the termination or expiration of the local emergency or such time as deemed safe and appropriate by either the city manager or the city council. Right now, there is a moratorium on, or there's a restriction on rent at the state level, but only for buildings that were built prior to 1995. Anything above that is not subjected to rental regulations. And there's no moratorium on any rent increases at either the county, state, or federal level. There are some moratoriums on evictions. This is at the state level. The state has prohibited any evictions from happening until February 1st of 2021. Right now, that's as long as tenants pay at least 25% of their rent, which is to avoid eviction. And that's between September 1st, 2020 to January 31st, 2021. After that, eviction proceedings can happen. And the state has also allowed the courts, through small claims courts, to have landlords recover the debt starting on March 1st. So, right now, that's open for discussion. And I'm here for any questions, as is Scott.
One thing I did want to bring up is, and I'm going to pull it up here. There is some legislation pending. It's in the state right now. It's called AB 15. It is probably going to pass, but, you know, we don't know. That would extend the moratorium from, on evictions from February 1st to the end of 2021.
And that was brought by David Chu, right?
To January 31st, 2021. There's a bill right now, given that the COVID cases are much more significant than they were when the initial moratorium was drafted, to extend that eviction moratorium, basically 11 months, it would require renters to pay 25% of their rent due. That's what the current draft of that bill says.
Right. Well, council who's got some opinion? Do you want to leave it as it is and have it expire, or you're looking at extending? Minnesota, how long? And that would be rent and.
I just.
That would be rent and evictions. We can be more restrictive, we can't be least.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we have the conversation about looking at the landlord's perspective as well. I'm pretty sure we all received the couple emails from homeowners in our community that have not been even spoken to, but haven't received rents in some properties. So I just want to make sure we have a discussion about looking at everybody, not just looking at, not just looking at the tenant.
Of course.
And on that note, Cindy, when we discussed this, we did it with the intention of helping tenants that they were to make the effort of at least paying something and to find out that some are not doing anything and not even accepting contact from their landlords. Really ticks me off in that here we were trying to help community stay in their homes and that they're not willing to work with their landlord just really boggles my mind. Because the idea was to try to keep everybody safe and housed and for them not to make that effort.
I think it's, I mean, I couldn't even guess on what percentage of the people aren't paying their rent. Or I couldn't even guess how many landlords have worked out payment agreements with their staff or offered some kind of deals. I mean, we have, we have no idea, do we? Does anybody have an idea?
One, one thing that I can contribute is, from the very beginning, I do know that the Bird Park apartments did in fact work with all of their, with their tenants and that they were very much having conversations and following up. So whether that's still happening, I don't know. But I filled out paperwork and felt, I felt very pleased to do so in order to help everybody stay whole as best as they could. I would imagine that in a couple of the other housing units that they have done the same thing, just knowing the way that they've worked in the past. So on one hand, the landlords that I have spoken to are individual landlords, not those associated with, you know, a corporation or state housing of any sort. So, I don't know, you know, those individual land, or those individual landlords are also people that don't have other pockets to fill from in order to make themselves whole. So, I agree with you, Michael, that, you know, it's a real shame because none of us knew six months ago or nine months ago now, none of us had any idea of what would happen. And looking at the revenue numbers from July, August, September, and October, there were many, many businesses that did far better than they have in years past, during those months specifically. I'm not saying that they made themselves whole from the beginning of the year through that time period, but just, there was revenue received. There was also the stipends that were added from the government on to the unemployment checks. And I know from two of the landlords that I spoke to that they did receive the information that their tenants were receiving unemployment, which, you know, it was really hard for them to feel that it was fair that their tenants weren't willing to pay anything during this time. So, I agree with your comments too. I guess honestly where I sit with this is I would rather, my personal opinion is to not continue this to a further date.
So to basically follow the county, basically follow the county, or what they've got going on?
Yes.
So if we let this expire and then the AB 15 passes, do we also follow that?
Yes, yes, and in fact, okay, so what, the first thing you're talking about is, is the rent increases. And what you said is, you know, you're, you would be stopping the rent increases from happening. There's a moratorium now from, starting, it ends on December 31st. So after that, people can raise rents.
Subject to state law.
There's the, go ahead.
I said, subject to state law.
Subject to state law, right.
Yeah.
Then there is the eviction moratorium. And right now, what has happened is the state moratorium expires at the end of January. The county of Los Angeles also adopted its own moratorium on evictions. And what the county of Los Angeles said is, if you are an incorporated city in Los Angeles County, you can evict people during this period, just like, just like the state. So there are two laws, state law and the county law. We think that both are going to be extended. You will frankly know when you meet in January whether the state has done that. Because we anticipate the state will do that soon. But if you don't do anything, then you're relying upon the state law. And again, for state law is you can, you have to pay 25% of your rent payments. And if you pay 25% and you provide documentation that you can't pay the rest of it because of COVID, then it becomes a debt that eventually you have to pay. But you can't be evicted for all of 2021. So that's what you're talking about. And then there's some other things that you have in your ordinance that we can talk about, about your, you know, your curfew and stuff like that. But the main issue tonight is really the eviction and the rent control.
I would, and trying to fairly balance both the eviction and the rent control. I understand, and I'm curious to know, Annie, as well, how many, how many people are not paying any form of rent currently? I would suspect the number is small, as we haven't heard. I don't know if Captain Hawking has heard of a number of people that are trying to do evictions because of lack of communication and/or, you know, trying to. I know that there were a couple of evictions that were in process even before COVID started that kind of got stalled out because of the pandemic. And I'm just curious to know if there's, if he has any insight in that. And then I'm wondering if it makes sense for us, being realistic, I think a lot of people are thinking that, you know, everything's going to return back to normal very quickly with vaccines and knowing what the numbers are right now of production and when that looks like it'll happen. I would guess that we're still at least facing tough times till June, if not through the end of the summer, of not being fully whole and back open and able to accept as many people and having people make money enough to do this. I don't know if it makes sense to look at the first half of the year and put in a dollar amount minimum. And then if the state and/or the county extend theirs, that we then follow suit with them. But I think that there's still, this isn't necessarily the time where we want people to be kicked out of a home and have to deal with finding a place to live during the coldest months of the year and the automatically slowest months of the year anyway. I just have a little hesitation of doing that right now. But would require that anyone who hasn't reached out, that they are paying a minimum amount to be able to maintain their residence, that that becomes part of the ordinance.
So, Lisa, let me just say that a different way. If I'm the landlord and I'm renting to somebody who has been working unemployment or salary we're making before, and they haven't responded to any of my phone calls, you're saying that it's okay for me to have to leave them in my home and give them a place to stay?
I have an issue with that, but I also have in my mind the idea that, you know, it is, it sounds really horrible and quite rude. It's much easier to have to kick someone out of a house in the spring than it is in the winter. It's much easier to find someone housing in the spring than it is in the winter in terms of placing them in a place if they have to end up getting assistance from one of the local mutual aid benefactors that helps put people into places to live when they're dealing with housing or getting them off the island. My thought, and I understand completely with the landlord, if they haven't been paying anything and haven't communicated, I don't agree with that. That's not okay. That wasn't the intent. And there was, I had thought the intent was in the, in the moratorium that that communication would need to be made with the landlord to be able to proceed accordingly. I don't know.
That is what, that is what the ordinance, the ordinance that you adopted
Right.
contains numerous requirements for the tenant notifying the landlord of their inability to pay. It even provides that if there are partial loss of rent, that they have to pay something for it. And we said, it can be an email, a text, a writing to the landlord. So we were, in the ordinance, we did make it, put the onus upon the tenant to notify the landlord of their financial issues.
So the eviction still could have taken place if those requirements were not met, correct?
Correct.
Right, so.
I don't believe there have been any evictions.
Well, except that, except that, except that the courts have really stopped processing evictions.
Evictions, right.
Yes, under our ordinance, if you didn't qualify for it, you weren't satisfying. Then it could go forward, assuming that the state and county ordinance weren't.
Didn't supersede it.
Than ours.
Yeah. Section 3B and C outline that pretty well.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I understand, Cindy, where you're coming from. And I, that's, my impression was that if those requirements weren't met, then they would have at least the legal standing to proceed with that process. That for those people who aren't doing that, there, I think, is some recourse for that. And well-earned and deserved as the landlord and well-stated as the tenant, knowing this. I think there are a lot of people who may not fit into those categories of receiving unemployment and/or receiving aid who may be also having issues, and that's something to consider. You know, I think that it's just, it's, it is, it hasn't been easy for anyone. I was hopeful that one of the things that would be included in the most recent bill that's hopefully getting passed would be that that would include some back pay for landlords to be able to kind of regain some of that or to have some kind of fund to be able to pull from as well. I don't know that I've seen that, which is unfortunate. But anyway, that's, I don't know where we want to go. I don't know, I have a feeling that the state is going to pass it. I have a feeling the county will pass something as well, at least short term. So I don't know if we want to stick with those for now and then move forward as, as we do in January and see what happens, or what we'd like to do.
I would just note for the record, that AB 16, which is a companion bill, and again, this is all being drafted as we speak. and again, this is all being drafted as we speak. But so AB 15 is the one that says the moratorium extends and through the end of 2021. AB 16, I'm just going to read you what it says. It provides unspecified financial support for tenants, small landlords and housing providers who have long-term financial effects due to COVID-19. So there's fundingism that the legislature has there for small landlords and for tenants. It's a companion bill to AB 15. So we'll have more clarity later on if both those pass. But I did want to just inform you that there's, that there is some financial leap out there provided by the state. Don't know how much yet or if it's, you know, significant, but it's out there.
So on the recommended action, staff recommends to align city policy with the city of California and/or Los Angeles County. So is that what we need to do, council? Or do we want to make up some arbitrary dates ourselves? I guess that's the other option.
Or provide staff with additional directions.
Align with the county.
Okay. There's one county vote.
Not one, is that you would let your ordinance expire and then we would know what the county does? And then once the county's acted, you could always adopt something.
Okay.
Could we extend it to the January, is it 5th, right, the first meeting?
It doesn't matter. Well, okay, what, the only thing that ends for Avalon is the rent control. That ends and the county doesn't have it. So the issue is, if you wanted to extend the no rent increase, you would have to give us direction and we would come back for a special meeting for adoption of an urgency ordinance sometime between now and the 1st of January.
Well, it makes no sense to have, give people the ability to raise the rents if they're already not getting paid because when they have to go and pay back 10 months' worth of rent, which is going to be impossible. So I would say we should extend the no rent increases for a while. Now Cindy, what's the opposite of that, you know? So if they did, so we said, okay, now you can do the, raise the rents. What is, what is that, is it not just hurting? See if you can find the other side of that, please, any of you.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, Annie. I think you're, you know, if you're already having someone that's having trouble being able to pay the rent in the first place and then increasing the rent on them to try to make up for some of what they didn't get previously seems, you know, slightly insurmountable.
And if somebody has been paying their rent and been good, well, so now we're going to make you pay more, you know? Where some of these folks I know, they're eking their money out to pay their rents. All the family members are getting together with their unemployment to pay the rent. And so to say, okay, kick it up 3%, or something like that, or 100 bucks, whatever they can do legally, 10%, it just doesn't seem, timing doesn't seem right.
So is there direction on that? I will note that your ordinance that you adopted on the rent control expires on January 1st, 2021. And it does provide a provision where if a landlord suffers hardship, that they can come and ask for an exemption from the rent increase. So there is the ability in your current ordinance for a landlord to apply to the city council for an exception to the rule.
Okay, let's keep that in there then, that's fine.
What date would you like? Just give us direction and we'll come back.
Well, what you just said sounded fine.
That's our view.
What date, the, you're going to have this rent control increased? I mean prohibition until?
To the next meeting? No, we'd want it longer than that, I would think.
No, like are we doing it till March or something like that, you know?
I was going to say June 30th.
You need four votes to do this via an urgency ordinance. And we come back, we come back, Denise and Michael would work with you on some day to come back where there's, you know, but you need four votes. Pass it. So if there's no agreement for four votes, then.
Do you want to do March 31st as a date to end to start? And then if we need to extend it further to base on what happens over the next two or three months? I think we're on an upward trajectory, but who the heck knows?
I feel comfortable with that. I hear the nod of Michael's head. I mean, yes, we care for the landlords, but if people aren't paying now, they're not going to be able to pay it later.
Right. I think I'd be more willing to allow for the increase moratorium to continue versus the eviction for non-communication and full non-payment. That seems to me more reasonable to look at as an overall fail to communicate. That makes more sense to me, that they're not going to communicate and/or they're not paying rent.
Okay. So the rent increase right now, it looks like there's four nodding heads for March 31st. And with that, if the landlord comes and pleads as a hardship case, then that's, keep that provision in there as well.
And then align all the other ones to the state and county?
Sure.
Well, I think we just let them lapse because.
Right.
Well, if that's all we have to do, yeah.
That's all you have to do. But then I do want to go because there were, there were some other items you talked about. You also adopted a curfew and loitering provision where you gave the city manager the ability to work with sheriffs, you know, to make certain that during the local emergency, that the curfew rules were being enforced. Do you want to keep that? And then the other one was that you, you adjusted the shoulder rates for the harbor, but those rates have expired. So you're back to your ramp rates that you have for harbor.
Okay. Yeah, so curfew leave the same as well.
Agreed.
Okay, so what we would do is we would bring back an urgency ordinance for your consideration for the rent control and the curfew. And staff will work with you where we can get a day where we can have, it will be a short meeting, a half hour, an hour or so, just to hammer this out.
Before, before the 31st?
Before the 31st, yes.
Before New Year's, okay. All right. Is there anything else?
Do we, do we have any public comment on this?
Uh, no.
Are you sure we're getting public comment? Because I find it very odd that for the last topic that we had, that there was no public comment.
I agree. I tested it and I was able to make a comment. So it does function. You know, perhaps we can put out some more education, but it is working.
Okay. I just want to be sure because that was a pretty hefty item. And this one, I received a lot of reaching out. So this one to me was really important too, that I thought would have received comment on, so I thought maybe something was faulty, but okay.
Okay, well Cindy, I just want to know, what mountain are you sitting in front of?
Uh, I think this is China Wall.
Oh, wow, it is.
With Catalina Poppies. Wait, I'm trying to move so you can see it.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa, I love you.
Hey, you guys, baby's here. I'm wondering if you'd like to see her.
Yes, absolutely. It's late.
She's, she's on her way.
Okay. What did we name her? What did you name her? I forget.
Aaliyah.
Aaliyah. Oh, beautiful. Does she look like your little boy?
Oh, we're entering terrible twos, guys. Wish me luck.
Well, you look lovely. You just look wonderful.
Very excited about the hair.
I look great. Yeah.
Yeah, I would be too.
Michael, I think when the COVID is over, I'm going to get a haircut eventually. So I can always give you some if you want.
No, I'm fine.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, Aaliyah.
Oh, congratulations.
Hi, pretty girl.
So gorgeous.
She's beautiful.
Oh, my gosh.
She's nice.
She's gorgeous.
Hopefully she'll be in one of those chairs when she's older.
Yeah.
There we go.
A quick heads up real quick, Annie, before you conclude. I just listened during the meeting. There's a COVID-19 vaccine virtual town hall on Thursday, December 17th at 6:00 PM. And Annie, I'll forward you, if Herlinda hasn't already, the meeting info. But there will be a couple, a few doctors on there answering questions. We can submit questions ahead of time. One of the questions that I submitted was just asking if there is the ability to prioritize communities that have a high level of potential exposure based on their smallness, the way that they use the same facilities for everything and also serve the greater public of Southern California, hoping that we may be able to see about where we end up on the priority list for vaccines. And then also a question of knowing that the staff for their medical center is fairly small, that having a lot of people come to get vaccines may overwhelm that system very quickly. I remember when we were little, the county used to come over and do vaccination day at the office space behind the library in that courtyard area. So they would bring over some extra county Department of Health nurses and do vaccines for all the kids going into school. So I don't know if that's something that we can potentially have them do that with our community once those are available. That that is something that I'm just asking the question of to start the conversation. And hopefully looking at Jason and their team as well to see what we can do to make it a good and easy process for everyone. And then also did pose the question about contact tracing. There's been a number of people who I've spoken to that have been directly exposed to or been with people who have tested positive and have received no communication from the county at all within days or weeks of them being confirmed positive. So there is a new either app or spot on your phone where you can enable CalNotif. If you haven't yet, please check it out and make sure that you do. That might be something that could potentially help with notifications. It basically takes just your location data without taking your name, any personal information or anything else, and allows it to notify cell phones if someone has been in your area for an extended period of time that has tested positive and notified the system they tested positive. So it's a way to contact trace, but anonymously. It doesn't tell you who's tested positive. It doesn't tell you anything like that. Other than you've been in contact with someone that has tested positive for a significant time, it's probably wise for you to get tested. So in lieu of getting calls from anyone or having any type of contact tracing right now, I think it might be a wise thing for the citizens of Avalon to look into. Again, it's called California Notify or CA Notify. And there's information on it on the state's COVID site. So sorry for adding that at the end and not at the beginning.
So it would be like canotify.gov?
Yeah, so if you go to covid19.ca.gov, there's actually information on that, on CalNotify on that page.
Okay.
So covid19.ca.gov.
Okay. What were you just doing there, Scott?
And one last comment. I did just, somebody just said that they had been trying to make a comment and couldn't. So if we could just triple check that. Uh, are I able?
We can definitely check that, but I only have the three comments. Two of them were mine tests and one of them from Jim at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
Well, City Council, Merry Christmas, Merry Christmas to everyone.
I have one more thing I would like to say to the city attorney.
Okay.
Happy birthday tomorrow, sir.
Thank you. You remember to Michael?
To both of you.
Yeah.
Please.
Thanks.
Happy birthday, guys.
Doesn't he look like, Scott, you look like you've lost weight.
Yeah, I've lost about 20 pounds.
Yeah.
From this.
Yeah, definitely can see it in your face. Looking, looking good. Anyway, Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas, Avalon. And Merry Christmas, Tony, everybody. Merry Christmas to Tony.
Merry Christmas, Tony.
Okay, meeting is adjourned.
Bye, everyone.